Let's call the meeting of the Eastside County Board of Education. We'll order, welcome those who are here. Ask for approval of the agenda. Mr. Will, I'm going to chance to get in here.
Hello? Want to talk about the board staff?
If you just call the board and have a motion to approve the agenda. You want a second?
I'll second.
The favor say aye?
Aye.
Not opposed? Move on to the consent items. I want some of the EPO meeting, any questions or comments?
How many of them are going to be in the EPO meeting?
Yeah, a motion is second to approve the minutes of the EPO meeting. Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? What's your preference? Supercharge support.
Uh, three things to report, probably more than we do three. First, I would publicly, a little while on the agenda, we get to talking about the master contract, but I'd like to publicly compliment the association perhaps for the negotiations process. They're really good process and they worked hard and remember that we started this process last night, putting the contracts together, so it's kind of a pretty glorious process, but they should be commended publicly, so there it is. Uh, the other thing, two things I would mention, I put in the packets, consideration to get you thinking about looking at maybe some adjustment to what we do with curriculum process, including a curriculum on director. And we'll be coming back to further discussion about that, I just want to point out the Z. And then the other again is instructional support levy, which we spent quite a bit of time, we were forced to the last year talking about. It's time to have happy circus and continue discussions and zoom about that, how we want to proceed or how you want to proceed as well. So those will be the three things that I would like to add today.
Go on to 505, business business. Which would be to, in A, to discuss and/or approve the series 400 and 500 board policies. Any comments about any of those we've been considering enough for the month?
Two recommended changes. First one is board policy 501.5, which is attendance center assignment. This is the same draft with what you received last one to consider. The only adjustment, it really deals with identifying some criteria, since we have, we'll have two elementary schools in the same district. Previously, that wasn't an issue, so we need something to guide that. What this particular policy does deals with geography, but it also gives flexibility for both the building principal and myself to deal with those individual situations. Uh, the second policy, recommended change is on code 508.2, which is called open night. Um, and I tightened up the language, you may want to talk about that. Um, it's keeping the good community relations early. It used to be called church night, now it's called open night. Uh, and I added the line, "Any exceptions must be pre-approved by the superintendent." Uh, that was put in specifically because there are going to be times where Wednesday night is set by state association, that's when you're playing, and that's when you're going to play. Uh, or if there is, well, that's just out of our control. Uh, and there will be some other circumstances that come up to where we would like to use Wednesday night for something, but I'd like to see the commitment that that's open communication with the managerial associations and furthering the dialogue with those two groups about Wednesday night. So that's what that one is about.
Has anybody had any comment from the public on any of those policies? I have a seat. I have one for you. Anybody? I have one parent contacted about the attendance center assignment. I can argue it was going to be cast in stone, and I take it all was valid. Was possibility of flexibility, uh, that they could, you know, in given circumstances, they could work it out with the building principals here, change communications. Other than that, I don't know.
I didn't, but I like what you wrote.
Okay, I want to adjourn. Motion to adopt those policies.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt series 400 and 500 policies.
Is that with the recommended changes or the existing policy? With the recommended.
Yeah, with the recommended. Action changes. Any discussion? Would the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? What's your preference? New business. Discuss and/or approve series 600, 700, 800, 900, the board policies. Uh, this will just be a special item of the night as we review it. Preview these a little bit, one month, and then act on the next. Yes, Dale?
Give us a little bit of an idea of what those policies are. I'm going to tell you in just a second. Cliff note version, not the... Come on, Dale. Series 600 is dealing with, it's called education district. Series 700 is non-instructional operations and business services. Non-operations, non-instructional operations, business and services. 800 series is building and sites. And 900 series is school district and community relations. Maybe they didn't get a mic and show up to you. At this point, we're not making recommendations for change in those four, uh, that that may be different next month. But at this point, we're not recommending changes to the existing policies that have done for the SAC district and the WOD vehicles.
Who's on the team? Has anybody, as you have previewed these to this point, have you come up with anything that you want to discuss at this time? Or is there any discussion on those that we will have that next month? And then back on the policies, hopefully ready to. Six B, discuss and/or approve 28E agreement with Kids World and Motley.
SAC districts had a 28E agreement with Kids World through a number of years. And have been asked by the new board to continue that arrangement with Kids World, and I strongly recommend that we continue that arrangement. One of the things that comes out of that is that two board members, uh, they have a different, a little bit different kind of board structure. Uh, they have the executive board, you need two representatives from this board to serve on that. In the past, it's been Marty and Brant most recently. So I would encourage you to approve the 28E agreement, so then two members need to volunteer.
Is it one year or two years?
I think it's a month, I think it's a year.
Oh, can it be? We haven't had, I haven't asked, well.
Yeah, I can, it's a little like, they have a board, and then they have a 28E board, which only meets when necessary. So, not very... Not a lot of heavy lifting with that assignment. Well, I would make the motion that we approve the 28E agreement.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the 28E agreement, uh, in the school district and Kids World and Motley. Any further discussion? No? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? What's your preference? Do you need to go on to this?
Uh, yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea to go on to Wednesday night. Okay. Marty and Brant will continue to represent the school district. Okay, let's move to six C, discuss and/or approve the retirement gold card. Want to talk about this a little bit, retirement gold card?
Yeah. Um, we were asked last month about the possibility of having a program for people who retire from the district, uh, and giving them a pass to attend activities. And so, what you have there in front of you is a draft of what that could look like and what you would view. I don't know that there's magic in what was put together here. I was intending to make a discussion start. But we think there should be some criteria for that. Um, that's what the bullet points are. That's all open to what the board's wishes are with this program. What currently does a pass possible?
What does that mean? This is 50, this is 35, 75?
Here's my question, though. Uh, if we, if we don't have the retired teachers go, um, we aren't going to sell a pop, we aren't going to sell a pop one. Does it really cost the district any money if they're sitting in that seat? No. So, the $75 really, it doesn't cost the district anything. But the money that they make on their concessions could be a... Even about the financial part, I think if someone dedicates a number of years of high quality service to our kids in our district, it's a token of appreciation for career. And I've heard that's a pretty minimal investment for that, in my opinion, and I think it's really good. I've heard a couple of teachers say that when they're retired, then they have the time to go to these events, so they want to do that. When they're still working, they don't have that time, so it's not that important. I think it's important to have it, I don't know what the wording should really be, I mean, I like what you got written here. Except you put quite a bit of time in it.
I think it'd be good, and I was just wondering, 20 years, I mean, 15, that, and again, if they're retiring or moving out of the system, 15, 15, I don't know.
Maybe the first bullet points, it's care that retired, good standing. Yeah. I really...
And have to be a servant.
Yeah, and I had 15 years in one draft and 20 in another, so that's sort of a discussion. Or whatever.
I throw this on, consideration two, uh, sounds like a self-serving, but we've got Frank, who's served the district now for 150 years, I shouldn't say it like that, Frank, I know, I get questioned about that picture. But anyway, uh, you know, I think that maybe there should be some recognition of people who have served on the board of education or in capacities like Frank, who served with the board of education, so that has them a similar manner. It's just a thought on my part.
I think we're on the same page, the second bullet maybe isn't as clear as it should have been, but served in any, maybe we need to talk about full-time. Using Frank as an example, I've been serving as a full-time, so that would be intentional. But I want to go back to what you're talking about. I mean, my, my, I got back to those teachers, but you think of the bus driver that's set up kids safe for 25 years, for life, over my goodness, this is, and it's still, he should be a closing member.
Yeah, we may be teaching for the free force time, but...
Frank is, SAC district, doing a thing for retirement programs. WLVA has issued lifetime passes for board members, not spouses, but just for, for any retirement board, they even pay years. That's all. We have a difference, we have a difference there in the current board. Don't call them in the past, we need to address any...
Frank, do you think you need to give them a golden apple or something? Yeah, I think you should give them a board, but I mean, as far as the pass. That's all they want, golden apple, couldn't even eat it.
Well, that's a consideration too.
Well, my personal opinion is the teachers are more important than school board members, but...
It's been...
So I said, that's my personal opinion. What's the wishes of the board?
Well, I personally like the idea, I think it's a policy should follow. Uh, I personally would obviously like to see this incorporated. People like Frank and John, who are, I think he was about to discuss with the board, and for the superintendent to provide full-time for each job.
Yeah, I would rather have some of them, yeah. About the years? I kind of like 15 years too.
That's a long time.
It is a long time.
Yes, it is. So, I'm still going to 15 years. If I can do a little, I'll be down. Have any consensus on the die? 15?
25, yeah.
Then we should probably have a motion to adopt the policy as it's been amended. Second. Motion second to adopt the lifetime golden card policy.
So everything's the same except the 15 years, correct?
15 years is changed, yes. And, yeah, some people, some people who are not working in the school daily, but have major role in house school functions, right, or empty job in board members, can be considered in this policy. One of those bullets.
So, discussion. Do you want to try to hold in the discrepancy between WLVA and SAC, or is the board members can do this, or do you want a separate one?
Let's get to the next set of policies and make sure it's not until it's anywhere in there, the green card.
Yeah, we can.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion for discussion. Okay. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Okay. Six B, discuss and/or approve, this being year 2012, certified master contract.
Little bit of backdrop, versus putting the two contracts together, some off the pace versus been done in the past, consolidate certain areas between the contracts over the last four years, for grade sharing. Uh, there were some, there were some definite differences between both the SAC contract and the WLVA contract. Most places that wasn't a huge issue, we figured out common language that we did all of the, there were a couple that we abandoned language from either, and what are, uh, reduction in force, or completely new language, but overall, we, according to statute, we followed as the base contract of WLVA contract, which is what we were supposed to do. Uh, but at all times, we integrated into it, so it really was a combination of both contracts, uh, also invested both contracts, that's the point, but, you know, with contracts, that's a matter of period of time, so you're going to be dealt with it. But I would say, and I speak for John, you know, I will speak for John, uh, it was a good process, and a very good process, and we're very, uh, very content with the language. Looking fair, which is my own sensation.
We don't have to really change, right? No, he's all right. Okay, the young guys.
I had to throw the teacher. I didn't really see you glaring at your guy that long.
Well, the only point I would make is, since the proposed Schedule A has a lower base for next year than this year, um, the generator base for Schedule B will remain at this year's level. Um, and why, it would be a step back from 2004.
Which differences are down?
$700 definitely, 27, 275 versus 26, 640.
So it might actually stay the same.
For one more year.
Depending on the reason that it's... That's the bottom, and what's the top?
28 plus 36, 28 more years is 51, 659.
We haven't spent a ton of time in the contracts. Quite a difference, the SAC contract, the money, the salary, the way we call it, it had a very low base in increments, and then it went to half increments, and they kept going. WLVA base was much higher, and didn't have pass steps in that model, because then it had a bottom. So two very, very different salary schedules. Uh, and what the hybrid is that we arrived at was moving the base up, not as high as what it was at WLVA, adding some steps from what WLVA had, but not having it go on forever and do this and have steps. It really is a hybrid of all of the two philosophies, and they were a lot different. Is the top a lot different too?
The top came out of the bottom, and step 32 would have been on SAC schedule. But I basically believe, it's a little higher than the, I don't have a, some of our options are depending on, you know, maybe 12 or 13 steps. So, so this is a little bit of a new number, but maybe 2,000, $2,000 higher for 15 steps.
I don't have a problem with that.
Well, anybody who's worked on salary negotiations alone knows that that can be a monumental task, which is the business, and go to arbitration every year with the education association to reach the common ground, and that puts the common decision in somebody else's hands. Uh, we haven't had to do that, and we didn't have to do it this year, and I think that we have to put two schedules together. Everything that goes with all of language, we think it has to be visited. I think it's, uh, just really outstanding, and we got to this point, even though it took as long as it did, we lived with it, we got to this point without any major difficulties at all. And Dr. Phoebe indicated earlier that's due in large part to the attitude that the associations take. Well, the early going, they have to get used to talking to one another. There was a lot of difference, differences, and after they got used to that, then they can start talking to the board. Those associates have, I believe, agreed right this week to ratify this contract that we put right away, I guess. So, less or more discussion, or we can adjourn to motion to approve the... So, move.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the 2012 certified master contract. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Uh, spreadsheet with listing of all of our current faculty numbers, what step they would be, and what the length of their contract is. Teaching contract. You see a .75, sometimes that's because they're shared, something going on there. And this would include, is this just to include our new staff? This would include all the new staff, the exception of one of the new staff that hired to his, uh, history. We'll be here in a minute. Really, we're asking you to approve this list, so we're not going to get contracts.
Motion second to approve Schedule A contract list, 2011, 12. Any discussion?
Yeah. You said that when there's a .75, that's something that's shared, what about 1.2 extended contracts? They had a longer contract, basically.
Please contract is 185, it's 185 days, so, uh, 1.081, maybe another 10 days on this one. The only other thing I might mention on board is, is that the column board says step, might have said years from the past, but since we've had to go up to two salary schedules, we're not necessarily on the step that matches up with the years of experience. And so this is the step you're at in the salary schedule, as not necessarily equal Any other questions about Schedule A? I'm hearing any questions from both, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Should care, it's classes or... Chris, we're down to 6F. Discuss and/or approve the pre-scheduled 12, 11, 12.
Pre-scheduled, you have, we're recommending is the same as last year's, with one cap difference. Is the preschool monthly, right now it's a $40 per month fee, a little house rate. We're still waiting for the state legislature to make a decision on school funding, including third school, and however that comes out, we may be able to come back and adjust that. So that's really more of an information item right now, based on what we know, how we continue to have it as this year. Not sure when that comes. Well, no change, they definitely not going to say it's satisfactory for all. Not recommending a decrease in any of those. That should be exactly the same as what you were...
Questions, Democrats?
I'll make a motion to approve the pre-scheduled 2011, 2012.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the pre-scheduled 2011, 12, new year. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Okay, we're down to personnel and reservations. Do you have some comments? Don't we lose the...
We do. Oh, okay, I thought you did it down.
You can leave in the section where you did it. Yeah, that takes us to, I'd hate to discuss future agenda items and set things.
What I've heard thus far for agenda items to include the approval or further discussion of those 600, 700, 800, 900. In June, we'll have handbooks for you to approve, personnel, student care. And then we'll also have real passes for board members to go to SAC and to WLBA as a collection pack for what the new board wants to be looking for.
I want to ask you.
Well, it's a... It's a... I'm moving.
I was at those...
Second.